This time, uh, Madam Chairman, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I recognize Brandon Root, who's gonna give a, uh, plead, uh, pledge allegiance and the dedication tonight.
Please stand. Attention, salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, not a damn occasion, too. All right. Dear Heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity to have our elected officials here tonight and have an open forum with the public. And we hope that you'll help guide any decision and policymaking procedures to make sure that Cleveland County remains the best county in the state of North Carolina.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda is recognition of any elected officials. Next item on the agenda is recognition of any veterans. Right now.
Brandon Root, uh, North Carolina Army National Guard, deployed in Operation Enduring Freedom.
Tony Hudson, U.S. Army, if you have any more, and I know you've got a pen, you already got it on.
Appreciate you serving. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of law enforcement.
Dan Hopple, County Sheriff.
Phil Todd, County Sheriff.
Gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is recognition of any county department heads.
Carrie Melton, County Manager.
Allison Mooney, HR.
Sherri Lander, PAX.
Scott Love, the night.
Next item on the agenda is motion to adopt a proposed agenda. Are there any items that need to be added to the agenda? If none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, pass it as it, as written.
Second. Any questions or discussion? If there are none, all those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is special recognition. At this time, I recognize Benetta Jameson, who's gonna come forward, recognition of the Longleaf Pine Award. Ms. McLeary.
Ooh.
I think all of our hearts just stopped.
Good catch. Thank you so much for allowing us to come this evening. I am Tropsy McLeary, Vice President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Omega Sigma Omega Chapter here, founded in Cleveland County. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is the oldest African-American organization comprised of college-educated, highly intelligent women who stand on the shoulders of great women who have and continue to make themselves available to service of, to all mankind. The Omega Chapter, Omega Sigma Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha is five years old and was founded on April the 23rd, 2017, here in Cleveland County with 15 members. We are so honored and pleased to have among our charter members one Mary Sheer Acker. Mary Sheer Acker was awarded the Order of the Long, Order of the Long Leaf Pine Award. Ms. Acker is intelligent, she is committed, she is courageous, she is dynamic leader, and she is a woman of God. She loves her family, she is so well-deserved of the recognition, and the Order of the Long Leaf Pine is the highest award recognized and given by the Governor of North Carolina. The State of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor, recognizing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Mary S. Acker, I do present the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. Here, let me turn it to the light, I'm sorry. That someone leaves where the sun shall shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. This is signed August the 13th, 2022, by our Governor, Roy Cooper. And I'll turn it back to you all if you have.
Thank you. Ms. Acker, would you like to come forward? And do you have anyone else, Ms. McLeary, you'd like to recognize or introduce with you tonight?
I would like to introduce the other members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Uh, we have Deidre Baker, uh, Lizard Bird, Danielle Greer, and Pam Mitchell, they have come, uh, and represented this.
Thank you. Ms. Aguirre.
Um, first, I, I wanna just say, never let it be known that sisters can keep a secret, because my sisters certainly did. I, I tell you, I was sitting in my church enjoying a, uh, getting ready to enjoy a dynamic message from my pastor, and all eyes started to look toward the door, and I was like, well, there's nothing should be more important than the sermon that's getting ready to be preached, so what's going on? So when I looked around and saw all of that wonderful pink and green ex- ex skating through the door, I thought, these are my sisters, I am my sister's keeper. We had just had a, a sermon about that, so it's so appropriate for how it was done. Um, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is a sorority of sisterhood. Uh, and because of its existence in Cleveland County, we are very blessed that the sorority exists in this county. Why? Because we are those sisters who go out and serve all mankind. It doesn't matter who you are, how you look, where you come from, which side of the track, party has nothing to do with it. It's just that we serve all mankind. So I am privileged to be a part of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Sisters of Omega Sigma Omega Chapter, serving Cleveland County and Rutherford County. And I also would like to share, um, just acknowledge my appreciation tonight, because when I walk in this chamber, it is a, a certain feeling that I have, because it was these citizens who entrusted me to be one of you. And so, uh, tonight, as I come back, uh, I just want to say I, I am appreciative of you, Chairman Gordon. I'm appreciative to you, Vice Chair Harden, and I am appreciative to you, County, County Manager Epley, and to Mr. Moore, Attorney, our Speaker, I'm gonna just go ahead and put that on there, and then the Clerk to the Board, Phyllis, and all of the county commissioners for giving me this opportunity, because my mama always told me, when someone's kind, you say thank you. So thank you, and God bless you in your work as you continue to serve the citizens of Cleveland County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, at the same time, we have a little item for you, so I'm gonna kick it over to the clerk for confirmation.
I was like, don't sit down, Mary. The Long Leaf Pine Award to Mary Acker. Whereas, Mary Acker is a native of Cleveland County, having graduated from Kings Mountain High School before leaving Cleveland County to receive her degree from Livingstone College in Middle Grades Education, going on to earn a double's master's degree from the University of North Carolina Charlotte in Supervision Instruction and Educational Leadership. And whereas, in 1995, Mary began, became the first African-American woman to serve as a Cleveland County Commissioner, going on to serve the community in this capacity for the next 15 years, where she served as the Board's Vice Chairman for two years, the Board's Chairman for two years, and during her tenure as County Commissioner, Mary Acker served as the North Carolina Association, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners President in 2009. And whereas, her role as a Commissioner, Mary Acker created the Youth Voice Initiative, a program designed to encourage young people to participate in their local government. This innovative program earns Mary Acker the honor of being inducted into the NCAA C Hall of Fame. And whereas, the Order of the Long Leaf Pine is among the most prestigious awards presented by the Governor of North Carolina, given to individuals who have a proven record of extraordinary service to the state, contribution to their communities, and many years given to their organizations. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioner commends Mary Acker for her years of dedicated service, numerous accompaniment, numerous accomplishments, and congratulates her on the well-deserved Long Leaf Pine Award. The Commissioners extend to Mary Acker their appreciation for her continued commitment to serving the youth and citizens of Cleveland County, adopted this the 18th day of October, 2022. Thank you.
Chairman Gordon, I would be remiss if I didn't say this, because the, she talked about youth voice, and this young man here was the first young man, we had an essay contest, and he won the essay contest, so he is Mr. Youth Voice. And so I just wa, I just wanted to say that, because, and now, because he went to, through the Youth Voice Initiative, he's an employee of Cleveland County, county government, so I was appreciative, yes.
Very much. We'd like to present this and again, come forward.
Thank you.
Come out with an award.
And close.
How are you doing, Aaron?
You're a little teardrop.
I know this is making too many, but I want my husband, Dr. T., and Dr. Gray, which is yours.
Okay, so let's do this.
That's a good picture to see.
We're gonna get tighter, tighter. Okay. All right, Aaron. Can I see y'all too? Did you see y'all? Rockets fire, Aaron, rockets fire.
Mm-hmm. There you go, Mary.
All right, before we move on, the Commissioners have anything they'd like to say?
I'd just like to say, again, everybody's said it, and will say it again, we just thank you for your service to your God and to your community. And, uh, you know, every year we go to the North Carolina County Commissioners Convention, and they talk about Mary Acker and, uh, what, uh, what she means to the youth of this state, and we, we really appreciate all you've done.
The very first time I met Mary, I was get, went out to Bethwire School to present Gideon Bibles, and some principals will not let you present the Bibles in the school. And I went in and talked to Mary about it, and she said, not only you can, but I'm gonna help you. So that, she's, I've always been impressed with how she's a leader.
Well, like Mary said, I'm, was here when she was here, so we've worked together, appreciate all you've done, and even Charles was your vet in life, that's it.
Yeah, and I would echo what all the other Commissioners have said, uh, all your service, all your hard work, even on, uh, even like the DSS Board, uh, it's been a pleasure being on there with you. And another thing that may not have anything to do with this, but you have one of the most gifted voices I have ever heard.
As the others have said, thank you for all that you do, congratulations. Ms. McLeary, it's always good to see you as well. And again, thank you for your service to, as a public servant to the county. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. At this time, I recognize the County Manager.
Yes, sir. Uh, several items for consideration. Customary item A is minutes from your October 4th regular Commissioner meeting. Those minutes are included in your packet, uh, for review and consideration. Items B and C are your monthly tax administration reports. Item B is your September 2022 collection report. Please report, uh, collection through September, 57.08%. Uh, and I would point out that this month, uh, mid-September is customary each year, is the month that the Department of Revenue issues our state board, uh, bills, so that percentage is a little bit lower than last month because the base has expanded, and you'll see that here in item C, as well, with your monthly abatements and supplements, uh, being a little bit larger than normal month because of that. So September 2022 abatements, $95,670.14, uh, and supplements for the month, total $8,914,818.49. Item D for consideration is budget amendment number 17 on the year. Uh, this is our Finance Department budgeting unreserved capital for an ongoing soil and erosion, uh, control, uh, project over, on the health department, uh, property in between Elizabeth School and the Public Health Department, that's $400,000. Item E, budget amendment number 14, request a budget $19,897 in a state grant, uh, substance abuse prevention and treatment block grant. Uh, this is a reoccurring grant that we've, uh, customarily received annually, uh, and will be used for operational, uh, cost in that function. Item F, also from the Health Department, budget amendment number 19, uh, $47,949, and again, State Department of Health and Human Services grant. This is our ninth year of receiving this one. Uh, it's a drug-free community grant, uh, and that'll be used for operational expenditures, uh, to continue to promote that service. Item G is a request to set a public hearing, uh, for November the 1st at your regular Commissioner meeting. This will be case 2230, which is a text amendment, uh, to the UDO, Section 12, 161. Uh, as the Board is aware, uh, the Board has directed staff to go back and redevelop separation standards for our RV park ordinance, uh, and that will require a public hearing, uh, and that's the purpose of this, uh, request to set a public hearing for the 1st of November. Item H is from our Legal Department, request to sell county-owned property. Uh, this parcel number is 22052, uh, the address is 281 Leitook Circle. The county obtained this property 2009 via foreclosure. Uh, we began the upset bid process running those advertisements and the statutory, uh, met the statutory guidelines for our, uh, for, for timeframe. Uh, currently, our max bid is $1,801. Um, our county investment, uh, for this property is about $4,158, so it's a slight, uh, the, the offer is slightly less than our investment, uh, but certainly we've had it for some time, eager to get it back on the tax books, uh, and think this is a, a reasonable and advantageous offer. Uh, the size of the parcel is about 15 hundredths of one acre, so a pretty small parcel of land. Item I is from the Legal Department, this is our second reading, uh, for the change in the animal, uh, services licensing ordinance that would repeal, uh, uh, the fee structure. Uh, again, read that in our first meet, for the first time at your last meeting, this is simply reading that for the second time. Uh, and that concludes your consent. Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any question you may have.
Commissioners, you've heard, but you've been presenting with the consent agenda, is there any discussion? So I have one question. So this repeal, uh, will be final after this? Yes, sir. If this passes? Yes, sir. If there's no, if there's no discussion, I entertain a motion to approve the present agenda as presented.
Submit.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Cleveland County Labor Market. I recognize Mr. Brandon Root for a short presentation.
All right, well, I appreciate you guys having me out here tonight, and, uh, the, the essay contest was titled, "How Does Cleveland County Improve the Lives of Its Citizens?", and that was the essay contest I won, and I'm very happy to try to continue that culture of improving the lives of our citizens, so, start off by saying that. So, and I would be remiss if I didn't put a plug in for Cleveland County Economic Development, for the organization for which I work. I had the pleasure of going to the, uh, Basic Economic Development Course, which is hosted by the UNC School of Government, or is at the UNC School of Government, and was hosted by the International Economic Development Council, it's a global organization of economic developers. And in that course, there were people, you know, of course, being geographically located, a lot of North and South Carolina folks, but there were people from all over the U.S., far as Florida, a bunch of northern states, and also a lady from Turkey in the class. So, again, international. And I gotta say, in that four-day class, every day I was there, Cleveland County, North Carolina, was brought up by a best practice, for best practices in developing an economy. So that means, if you kinda think about it, when the world wants to know how to develop an economy, they look to Cleveland County. So, just again, I'm gonna put a, a plug in there for, for the great work that the, and the support of the Commissioners for allowing us to do what we do, so. And then, to kinda get into the presentation a little bit, uh, this is something I'm pretty passionate about. I spent the majority of my career in, in workforce development before moving into economic development, and workforce development is, these days, labor is a key issue in economic development. And I just, um, wanted to put a quick kudos in for Mr. Epley, who at our annual employee meeting had really great insight into the world of, uh, workforce and what are causing sort of the labor issues, uh, especially for, you know, just having looked up the data, was very impressive. And then also, once again, uh, Cleveland County deserves recognition for setting yourself up to be the employer of choice. Um, a lot of the recommendations and things that you guys have done, or a lot of the strategies you guys have taken on to separate yourselves from, uh, other employment opportunities are recommendations that I provide clientele that I serve on a daily basis for best practices. So you guys are implementing a lot of those industry standard best practices, and you're really setting the standard for the county as a whole, so. So now I'm gonna get into the presentation. So this presentation's what I like to call organic, right? I've given it a lot over the last two years. And every time I give the presentation, I get asked a question that stumps me, and I go back and I dig up more data. But kinda how it all started was, uh, you know, we all know our history of being rich in textiles and manufacturing and this hard-working kinda backbone of America type of folks. And so it really bothers me when somebody comes and says, uh, people are lazy and they don't wanna work, because that just doesn't fit with my perception of our county and the citizens that live here. I feel like there are a lot of hard-working people here, and I, and so I decided to, to dive into the data and find data-driven answers to that question, where are the missing people in the workforce? And so, a lot of this is, is all derived completely from, uh, data, but there are interpretations that I make, right? And I call those World According to Brandon, right? And so I'm very clear to delineate or differentiate what is, uh, World According to Brandon, I guess you could say. But I think if we look at the data together, you can kind of arrive at, it's a lot of the same conclusions I did, so. So again, just going back to our history, right, and I kinda put this thing a little bit out of order. If you look here, December 1994, wow, 3.4% unemployment rate, we were killing it, right? Height of, height of textiles and manufacturing in the community, doing great at that time, 3.4% unemployment, most of the county was employed. And then, of course, through a combination of globalization and a lot of other market factors, uh, we lost a lot of that textile industry through the late 90s and early 2000s, resulting in our highest record unemployment in 2009, is 17%, right? And so if you kinda, again, look back at the history, the, the catalyst that really kinda turned the county around that you can always point back to was Clearwater Paper in 2010, right? And then after 2010, you can see it starts to drop back down. Uh, so that industry coming in, bringing all those great jobs, catalyzed other great infrastructure and other great jobs, and it kinda steamrolled, right? And then, of course, just kinda as a fun fact, May 2020, we hit our other, uh, height in the county at 14.1%, but that's what I like to call a, a, an artificial recession, right? And I, I didn't come up with that term, I stole that from an economist. Uh, and it's because it wasn't caused by natural supply and demand, right? It was almost, you can say, an act of God that caused that, that height, that spike, the COVID pandemic caused that unemployment, so. So then we go and take a look at Cleveland County's demographics and our current workforce, right? And so I'm gonna break a lot of these numbers down in the next slide, because what the heck does all this mean? You know, not in the labor force, labor force, so, uh, but the, kinda the key takeaway on this slide here is that we have hit a record high in population, 100,218, and, uh, this is as of June 2022. The system I pull all this data from is a little backlog, um, but that's still pretty current. Uh, the, the key here is this, under 16 military institutionalized population, 19,185, right? So, um, right out of the gate, you're kinda taking 20,000 people almost out of the workforce, right? So these are people who are under 16, right? We can all generally agree that five-year-olds shouldn't be working in manufacturing plants, so we don't count them in the workforce demographic. If they're in the military, they don't count in our workforce demographic, even if their home of record is here. So for example, when I was deployed overseas, my home of record was in Cleveland County, but I wasn't working in Cleveland County, so I was not included in the workforce demographic and institutionalized people. So these are people that are incarcerated, are in jail, are historically ineligible to work, but a lot of companies are getting really creative with that, too, and finding ways to bring those folks to work, so. But historically, these people are considered, um, are not considered in your labor force demographic. So, again, if we go to the next slide, uh, I, this is a little busy, but I kinda feel like it's important to break down how some of these numbers are calculated, because, um, one of the things, this World According to Brandon, again, I got a little upset in a meeting one time, and somebody said, well, people don't wanna work these days, and I said, at that point in time, it was 4% unemployment. I said, well, if there's only 4% of people unemployed, that means 96% of people are working, so you just discredited 96% of our population. But that's not entirely true, 'cause that unemployment statistic doesn't tell the full story. So again, we go back, we've already lost 20,000 people who we've, can all agree, are not eligible to work. And so, um, then we go to the next part of this, um, statistic, employed. Easy enough to understand, 46,000-ish people employed in the county, that means they're working. And there's about 2,125 people unemployed, meaning they're not working, but they have actively sought work in the last four weeks. So they are not working, but they're looking for work. And so if you take this number, and, um, you take the unemployed, divide it by the, the, the total number of employed and unemployed folks, that's what gets you your 4.4% unemployment rate. And so, but what that does is, you see here, 48,607 total employed and unemployed, does not equate to this number, which is the total people who are eligible to go to work, right? They're over the age of 16, and they're, they're not in jail, right? So these are, these are folks that are, cause generally, so, if you take that, that's where we get this not in the labor force statistic, right? Which is about 32,000 people. And so these are people that are old enough to work, they meet all the general requirements for working, but they're not working. And so that's usually where people say, there they are, there's the lazy people, 32,000 of them, there, they can work, but they're not working. And again, we're gonna look at some data that hopefully will kinda maybe, uh, explain that a little bit closely. But I, I do wanna explain this other statistic, labor force participation. So, again, if you, if you take the total labor force divided by the people who are eligible to work, that gets you the labor force participation rate, which, uh, people will say 60% is what Cleveland County is at, and people will say that sounds low, but if you look at us compared to North Carolina as a whole and the U.S., we're pretty on par. And that's just another way to look at the labor force, so. Okay, boring statistics out of the way. So now let's take a look at who is not in the labor force. Who are these 32,000 people that are, um, eligible to work but aren't working? So I, I come up, I present to you some key considerations. These two, first ones, I'm just gonna talk about, uh, I don't have a lot of data to back this up, but if you just kinda think about it anecdotally, right? Disabled folks are not necessarily able to hold the same kind of job that a not-disabled person, right? A fully functioning person can hold. That being said, they meet the age, and if they're not severely disabled to where they're confined to a nursing home, they're not institutionalized, and, uh, they're within the working age and they're not in the military. So, so these people technically count in your labor force. And I don't have any data on how many folks are disabled, but it's just something to think about when you start thinking about the labor force, so. And, and, and you can get creative with this, too, you know? In Cleveland County, we have Cleveland Vocational Industries, which works hard, and vocational rehab to, to find meaningful jobs for those folks who are disadvantaged physically and mentally. And then another kinda consideration that I don't have really a lot of data, but to think about, are caretakers. And caretakers can be caretakers of the disabled, or caretakers of elderly parents or other family members, right? So they're, it's hard to say that they're lazy and not working when they're really at home taking care of someone that they love, right? But they are, may not be considering labor force, and again, I don't have a lot of data to back that up, but just something to think about. And so we're gonna go through the rest of these a little bit more. So this is something that, that, that you can't really find a clear definition for it, but it's something that's talked about in workforce development spheres, right? It's the hidden labor market, or the gray workforce, right? These are people who... workforce, right? These are people who, uh, potentially are working, uh, but they're not necessarily reporting their taxes, which means they're not being included in workforce demographics. They're not being included in that working population. So you think about maybe people who do handy, handyman, odd-job-type stuff, right? Or maybe lawn care. A lot of people maybe in lawn care don't necessarily report their earnings like they should. Or, uh, maybe they're doing illicit things to make money, right? And they're not reporting their taxes. And so somebody, again, it'd be an organic presentation. Somebody asked me one time, "Well, Brandon, um, where, do we have any data on who these people are, or where, or how many there could be?" And I said, "Well, if we knew that, then we'd make them pay their taxes and they'd be counted." So, so we don't really have a lot of, a lot of data there. And it's just something to think about when you're, you're breaking down that number. You know, uh, people who may be working, doing those odd jobs, but aren't reporting income, not being counted. And here's where we start getting into the little bit more fun stuff. Um, so retirees, Cleveland County, and we're gonna talk about more about retirees later in the presentation as well. Uh, but some key considerations are, uh, folks who are retired, um, right? And, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and say everybody in these age ranges are retired. I certainly know tons of folks that are, uh, i- i- in these age groups that are still actively working. Uh, but I mean, realistically, someone who's over the age of 85 is most likely retired. And there's probably a lot of these folks that are retired. My granddad, as soon as he hit retirement age, he worked four years for Carolina Freight. A man went home and he retired, and he enjoyed every moment of it. And you couldn't have convinced him to go back to work. He had his pension, and he loved retirement, right? And I wouldn't consider him lazy. He did his time, right? He, he did his time in the workforce. Uh, and so it's, it's up to the new generation to kind of take that on, right? Become the, the new labor force. So, uh, we generally don't like to consider retirees lazy. But if a company is proactive and creates flexible working schedules, they can bring some of these folks back into the workforce, which we've seen a fair amount of. And so here, here's my favorite one to talk about, stay-at-home parents. Uh, so it's always kind of been up in the air, right? Like, if someone's staying at home watching a young child i- in, in their home, uh, that they're clearly not in the workforce. And so the idea is, uh, again, I don't know, I get asked this all the time, "How many are there?" And I don't know. So I did a little digging. And so if you look at our, just the population, right? Between the age of 0.5, whoops, between the age of 0.5 and 5 to 9, uh, it's about 12,000 kids. And again, that's hard to break down, because there could be multi-children households, right? There could be a family with three children, uh, stay-at-home parents watching three children at home. So it's hard to say that there are 12,500 parents at home watching children and not working. And also, we mentioned that we have a high number potentially retirees. Grandparents often watch children. So it's hard to really break that down in a way that's, um, really draws a great correlation, or a little bit of the "world according to Brandon" there. But I think, in my opinion, I think this is where a large number of folks are in the workforce. I mean, if you take the fact that there were nearly 20,000 people who are of retirement age already, combine it with the fact that there are, I mean, I don't know, eight, 12,000 folks maybe staying home watching young children, and there's your 30,000 almost. You, you get pretty close. You know, we can really whittle that number, number down. A- and so you combine that with the high cost of childcare, right? So this is, this, this right here is kind of the, this is for Cleveland County. Um, and this is the market rate cost, and I broke it down to an annual basis for childcare in Cleveland County. And this, this market rate is not an average cost. It's what the state has determined what the market rate is for their subsidies that they provide, uh, through different, uh, programs. Uh, and so you can see here, on an annual basis, it's pretty expensive, right? And then you take that number there, and just say, again, you think about a single, a single parent or a stay-at-home parent, um, you start thinking about, 40-hour work weeks are tough with children. Uh, and a lot of, some, some of our manufacturing partners still work swing shifts, which are tough for parents. They can't leave a child at home at night, uh, and they may not be able to get off in time to take the child to school or to pick them up after school. So you start looking at that and realizing that maybe the traditional methods of employment don't apply to stay-at-home parents as much, right? And so, but maybe a, a, a single mother decides, "Hey, I want to go get a part-time job." All right? "I want to still contribute to the workforce. I want to go get a part-time job and try to help bring in some extra income." Well, you can see here, and this is just, and this is just a sample breakdown, but let's assume they got a job, working 20 hours a week, $12 an hour. Let's assume they work all 52 weeks in a year, all right? $12,480 before taxes, delivering home, you know, so after taxes, it's less. And then if they live in the upper end of the county, right, you gotta consider gas, right? And so by the time you take that kind of, that kind of cost, or that kind of income compared to this kind of cost, it's not worth it. It's not worth for that parent to go to work, because it's cost prohibitive. And, you know, and, and so the, the, the more things that we can do with the expansion of pre-K services in the state and things like that, to kind of, uh, get those children in a daycare system, the more potential we have for opening up people to go to work and more opportunities for workforce. And so I'm gonna talk about a couple of other negative kind of future trends here that are a little scary. Um, birth rate. The U.S. has had a declining birth rate since the 70s. So what that means is, to replace yourself in the workforce, every person, every family has to have two children. If it's two children, you're breaking even. The, the population will stay the same, because you're replacing both parents in the, in the workforce, right? And so if a single-family, a, a parent combo has one child, that's negative, right? They haven't fully replaced themselves. If they have more than two children, that's a positive correlation, right? They're adding to the workforce. And since the 70s, uh, the U.S. has had a declining birth rate, which means there are less and less people entering the workforce, um, which again, goes back to that labor crunch, right? It's not necessarily that, that, that people are lazy, they're retired, right? They may be staying at home, or they just don't exist. There's less people than there were, or there will be less people. The, the birth rate continues to decline. And coupled with that, uh, some more Cleveland County-specific data, uh, we lost a lot of millennials. If you think about when millennials were graduating, right? The height of the unemployment and the recession in the county, that's when a lot of them were graduating, and we lost a lot of them during that period of time. So you can see, for our county our size, um, we have less than the national average of millennials. So we lost a lot of that younger-aged demographic. And it's, you know, it's a, it sounds bad, but what we can do is take a lesson learned from here, right? We've got to actively promote the careers within our community and make sure that we don't lose that Generation Z, the new generation coming and going up and graduating out of high school, and actively promote the careers that are within our community, and show them that there are great opportunities here in Cleveland County for them to live, work, and play here, right? So continue that. And then you couple, though, the fact, though, that we have low millennials with, again, that high retirement demographic, right? So we've got a lot of people who are slated to potentially retire soon. So, right, as people continually get older, they, maybe they're 65 now and they're still working, but by the time they're 70, maybe they decide to retire, or maybe by the time they're 75. Either way, we're at a higher-than-average retirement risk. So we have higher-than-average retirement risk for a community of our size. So there are more people slated to retire, uh, than a, a normal community that is our size. So those are sort of some scary demographics, but we can be very proactive and try to actively recruit people to the community to fill our workforce needs, and also, uh, again, promote those careers within the high school system, or the K-12 system. And so I like to end my presentations on some positive notes. Uh, so if we look at the commuting pattern, and this starts out sounding like a negative, if you look at the total commuting pattern for Cleveland County, we're negative 6,000, or almost 7,000. Uh, so that means more people leave the county every day to go to work than they drive in. So more people are driving out of Cleveland County to go find jobs in other counties than are driving in to take jobs here in this county. And that sounds bad at first, but really, it's kind of low-hanging fruit, because if we can convince the people that live here to work here, well, then we've just increased our labor pool, right? We've, we've brought people that were, uh, uh, that, they, they live here, they pay their property taxes here. Now we can convince them to come in and work here, we'll have increased the overall, uh, employment numbers for our community. And so every time I give this presentation, I get asked, uh, "Where are they going, or where are they coming from?" And so here's kind of a breakdown here a little bit more closely, uh, showing where they're coming from. So you can see these dark green counties are, uh, people, where people are coming from, a lot of them come from Rutherford, uh, Gaston and Mecklenburg County. We, we draw a lot of people from those areas into the county. And then for peoples leaving the county, again, we lose most of them to Gaston and Mecklenburg Counties. So that's where they mostly drive to for work there. Um, and migration. So again, our population has increased, and we can continue to market our community and our jobs, uh, well, and we will continue to have growing population just via migration, meaning people are moving into the county, they're relocating here. And so this number has historically not been great, but you can see, it's continually risen, and risen pretty dramatically this last year. So we have had a net total of 929 people move into the community, which is an awesome number. Um, and hopefully one that continues to grow. And then I can always get asked again, "Where are they coming from?" So here are the top five places they come from, they're moving from. And, uh, so, uh, Gaston, Mecklenburg, Rutherford, Iredale, Buncombe County are the top five places where, uh, people are moving in from. So, but then it's a long list, right? People all over the country move here, uh, for various reasons. So, and that is the end of the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Brandon. Commissioners, do you have any questions or any comments for, uh, Brandon?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I don't quite understand what you said, "disabled people," because my lifetime of working and hiring people, if they're disabled and can't work, they're not classified as workers. So how come you're classifying them as workforce people?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's just-
Because if they're not eligible, they can't work, they can't hold a job. So why would they even be included in any numbers? Because that's somebody that is just out there. Like, say, my 50, 60 years in the mining business, I wouldn't hire somebody that didn't have two legs.
Yeah.
But he's disabled, but there may be something else he can do. But what you're considering disabled people part of our workforce that's not employed, just don't, uh-
Brandon, is that term disabled, partial, total disabled? Like, what Johnny's talking about could, would be more true for total disabled, but partial disable, disability could, they can be partially, partially disable for one profession or discipline, but able to work in something else.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So you get that all the time, where people are unable to maybe work in mines, but they can answer a phone for customer service, so that they generally are still considered in the workforce. And again-
Yeah, but for customer service, you gotta have them legged and run out and get somebody and come back. I'm saying, if, if, if a person is disabled, listed disabled, and they're drawing disability, then they're not, they shouldn't even be considered in the workforce.
Yeah. And I'm not 100% sure how that's broken down, but again, if you look at the, the definition, it's civilian, non-institutionalized, and over 16. So a disabled person can meet all three of those categories. If they're not so severely disabled that they are institutionalized and they still live at home, they would unfortunately be counted.
Well, they're counted, but it doesn't make it right.
Yeah, again.
Because the, the numbers are not right. It's just like, if, if I choose to stay home and I'm retired and keep my kids, then after I'm retired, I've come out of the workforce. Those numbers shouldn't be counted either.
Yeah. But again, uh, you know, some, some companies get really creative, and they do hire older workers. It's a-
Well, they do, but I'm saying that the ones that are retired that don't want a job should not be counted in the workforce. I think that some of the numbers are, I guess I question the numbers.
Exactly. Yeah, there, there are. That's why I say that unemployment rate number doesn't tell the whole story. Uh, and those are the kind of considerations we have to take into account, that the, the overall numbers are a little bit, uh, open for interpretation. So-
And you got these numbers from state numbers, not, not necessar- you haven't come up with these numbers on your own, so-
No, no, no. A lot of this is-
Maybe, you know, uh, Johnny's question needs to be presented to-
The federal-
Ever who makes those decisions.
So a lot of this information is, we, we have a software package called Economic Modeling Services Incorporated, EMSI, and that's where I use, uh, to draw a lot of this. But they draw their data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which is that federal organization that-
Yeah, it, it's like some of the surveys they do. They use landline for the survey. How many people's got landline?
Yeah.
That's old people. So our answer's not gonna be what the guys that don't have landline. So I, I question sometime where they come up with these numbers and how they accumulate them.
No, you're exactly, yeah, you're exactly right.
Brian, you have something to add?
Yeah, I'll just first-
You did a good job.
Thank you.
First, Brandon, thank you so much for coming. I asked Brandon, um, to, to come and share some of this, these numbers with our board. And I think the two primary takeaways should continue to be that, um, you know, Cleveland County has been a leader across the state, uh, in economic development, job creation. A lot of those pioneering concepts of speculative building, screen space, workforce development, really cutting edge. And in order for us to continue to do that, development of workforce is critical. We, we continue, have been for some time, and, and, and expect to continue over the next three to five years when we are, uh, in discussion with, uh, you know, expansion, relocation industries, workforce and meeting that need is their number-one question. And, and continuing to keep a pulse on our population and our available workforce, I think is critical. And I also think it helps shine a light on us, Cleveland County government, as an employer. We're a large employer, uh, top 10 in, in the county, 800 full-time roughly, and another couple hundred part-time. And, and when you start drilling down the data there, so many of our jobs require, uh, you know, higher levels of degrees and certification and trade skills and all those things that dwindles this population and these numbers even more. So when you have a contracting population with birth rates and those type things, you know, really, you pointed out that the emphasis on Cleveland County positioning itself as an employer of choice, so that we're attractive, I think is, because we're in the same competitive mode as all these other folks you're talking about. And I, I think those are the two biggest takeaways for me, and I appreciate you sharing the information.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Take again, Brian.
Next item on the agenda is the Cleveland County construction update. Uh, Mr. Blink Mars.
Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. Um, give you guys a, a brief update on some of the projects we got going on here in Cleveland County. Obviously, we got a lot of moving parts, and I just want to kind of touch base on some of the projects we've got going on. Um, kind of touch base on the tax renovation, uh, as well as the LaGrande Center lighting and AV. The tax renovation is a smaller renovation job, basically upfitting the tax office. Uh, we had some older carpet installed that we had removed. We've got some nicer LVT flooring, uh, down in there as well. We've also got a single point of entrance. I think we had multiple points of entrances for the, uh, for the general public, so I think that's gonna make that, uh, flow a little bit better. The LaGrande Center lighting and AV is a somewhat outdated system. Right now, the county is working with MSWG, which is an engineering firm to help design a lighting and control schematic for that building, so that we can obviously hopefully go LED, bring the power bill down, and make it function a little bit better. We've also got the Health Department and DSS co-location, uh, renovation. Phase one is completed, and phase two is following right behind it. Our expected completion and complete move-in for these two are gonna be January of 2023. So that project is coming right around the corner to be, uh, completed. And if you guys haven't been to that building, it's, it's a really nice renovation job that, uh, Beam Construction has done with Talley and Smith. Justice Center, this is the big one that everybody in the county's been talking about. Um, we've been working with Brian and Carrie and a lot of the stakeholders over the last, uh, weeks and, and months, and, uh, well long before I got brought on with the county, uh, in years past, about trying to get this thing dialed in. Right now, we're finishing up some of the final schematic designs, uh, for this area, and just making sure that we've got everything accounted for, uh, to make this building function for the long-term use of it. Uh, we had our first stakeholder meeting this morning, where, uh, we met the design team with, uh, some of the stakeholders. We got everybody in a room and shook hands and just got everybody in front of everybody. Um, some of the next steps for this larger Justice Center is gonna be some preliminary construction that you're gonna see going on over the next couple of months, as well as on into the, uh, early 2023 year. Uh, first thing you're gonna start seeing is a new sewer line that's gonna have to take place. Um, it's a gravity-fed sewer line on the south side of this drawing here. Um, that's gonna be part of closing down Justice Place. Obviously, you can see, this gray area here is gonna be the outline of our brand-new Justice Center, and Justice Place here is gonna have to close. Um, so within the next couple of months, you're gonna start seeing that gravity-fed sewer, which is running down Justice Place. It's actually gonna shift across the front portion of this building. Um, and that's one of the first things that's gotta happen before we can start, uh, the construction process. Um, another thing that is moving forward is our demolition, early demolition package, which, if you guys will notice, this is the current star building. That building, as well as the Guardian Ed Latimer Building, will be, uh, bid out here in the next couple of months, and we're hoping that that demolition will begin around January, February of 2023. Um, obviously, we've got a lot of property that we've been trying to purchase around this area here. Um, the whole idea is that this is gonna be a, a, a big project for the county, and we want this to be a very seamless, uh, campus whenever everything is done. So the county's been working, trying to, uh, acquire different small patches of properties and parcels around this area just to make it a little more- parcels around this area just to make it a little more, make the functionality of the campus work a little bit better. Construction schedule, this is a very brief overview. Obviously, a construction job at this size, you can, you can dive down into the weeds as deep as you want to go. But in general, initial design has began in September of 2022. The big thing I want to point out is in 2025, that's when we're estimating that the actual construction of the new Justice Center will be complete. At that point, we will have to transition employees from the inside of the current Justice Center, the current courthouse that we have now. We'll have to transfer them into the new building, at which point we can start the demolition of the old courthouse and turn that into the parking plaza, which will put our completion date around the spring of 2026. The county also was awarded a five million dollar grant to build a new nine-one-one center. This is in the very early stages of the design process. We actually just had our first design kickoff meeting last week with Mosley and Talley and Smith, no, no.
Yates-McCon.
Yates-McCon. So that is, that is coming down pretty quick and looking forward to building the new nine-one-one New Board of Elections, right now, we're looking at possibly moving Board of Elections over to the former Shelby Rescue Squad, where you're working with a engineer firm right now on, you can see this is a kind of generalistic idea. You've got an older EMS base that sits in this area here that's going to be getting demoed, and then the idea is that we'll install a pretty good bit of parking in this area. The building that Board of Elections will be housed in will be this one here, which is roughly eight years old, and should be able to be renovated to suit their needs. We've also got a stormwater project going on next to the, the Health Department. I don't know if you guys have ventured down there or not. We've got a lot of equipment down there. We've been having a lot of issue with a heavy amount of water. You guys can see the size of this pipe that is feeding down into this ditch line. And what we were having was, we were having a pretty good bit of erosion on our property right around this first little pond here. So the county has actually went in, and we are taking this detail here, and we are really dressing this site up so that we can basically address this stormwater issue for the next thirty years versus within the next three to four months. So we're, we're trying to tackle this one time and do it right so that we can, we can get in there and be done. Also, while we are in there, we are going to be installing the infrastructure for a road that will be used to access a new childcare facility, which is going to be the opposite side of this drainage ditch. So right now, we are going to be putting in DOT-certified piping so that whenever we actually begin construction on this new employee childcare center, which will be directly across from the health, from the healthcare facility, all that infrastructure is going to be there. So we won't have to re-mobilize a new site contractor and go back into that ditch and redig all that stuff back up. Shell Building Number Four, this is a joint venture between the city as well as the county. This building, concrete walls are up, metal joist has actually arrived as of today. We're expecting that this building is going to be completed around spring of 2023, and we've got high hopes that there's going to be a lot of interest for some new businesses to come to town that's going to be interested in this square footage. Following Shell Building Number Four, we've got the door and meal project, which will actually turn into the Shell Building Number Five. Right now, what I am working on is trying to get some soil samples in this area here. The idea is we need to determine what type of soil and dirt we have so that we can determine what is going to be the best-suited use for this property. If the soil comes back good, then we've got a lot of different options we can, we can go with. Landfield Shop, right now, we are looking over the idea of possibly adding on and building a new landfill shop over at the larger landfill. Right now, what we're thinking is if we were able to do this, this would help make the campus a little more efficient for where we're working on vehicles, where we're working on equipment. So this is in the very, very early stages, and just something that we wanted to add. Foothill Shooting Range, I don't know how much everybody knows about this, but Cleveland County was selected by Glock back in March or April of this year to host a national pistol competition in November. So in the meantime, there's been a whole lot of work going on over at the shooting range to prepare for this national match that's coming to Cleveland County. Part of that is an addition of five brand-new bays. We've also installed a, two new dividers at four and five, which you can see these divider walls here, which are very significant borders between two different ranges to make that really safe. We've got six new safe places as where, as well. And then we've also got a good pavilion for people to hang out, go to the bathroom, and take a break whenever they're, they're watching these matches go on. So a lot of, a lot of moving parts over there that's happened in the last six to seven months. It was kind of quick, but you guys got any questions for me?
Before we, Brian, you have anything you'd like to add before we take-
I guess the question I got.
Yes, sir.
When the new Justice Center is built, are we looking now at a plan, how are we going to exit the old building to move into the new one? Because, you know, you've got the courtroom to move, you've got the deputy to move, you've got a lot of stuff to move. Or are we looking to see which ones need to be moved first, and how it would be done? Because we don't need to wait till we get right down to it.
Correct. And I think that's part of a lot of our meetings that we're having, especially the one that we had today with some of the different department heads, as well as the design team, so that the whole idea is that everybody that's going to be affected by this move knows kind of where we're going and where we're at during this entire construction phase. So once we establish what is going to be the most feasible person to, I guess, be the first person to move, then they can go ahead and start preparing for that in months and months in advance versus knocking on their door and saying, hey, we need you guys to move the next day.
And as a subset of that, we've also put together specific committees for specific areas. So for example, the detention conversion will be just as significant as the courthouse conversion. So we're assembling teams of experts that are starting now, two and a half years early, to figure out which phase goes, you know, kind of in what logistical order.
I would think the detention could come last after you've got everybody out of the old building, you know, because they're down on the annex. I'm just thinking, but it sounded like y'all, y'all on it.
Yeah, it's a phase of growth, so.
Yeah. Well, and it's sort of three different sections. You've got the detention, you've got the courthouse, and you've got the jail. So while the courthouse is moving, they're going to be moving over this way, jail can come in the other way. So it's not like, you know, it's not like we're going to have ten people trying to go to the front door. So I think, I think-
Y'all only got so many deputies to move to Pruders and things like that, so all that's got to be taken into consideration. I would just ask them the question. I feel sure y'all done looked at it.
Any other questions, comments?
Just comment, looks like you've hit the ground running.
Try my best.
And you had a plate pool when you got here, so.
Try my best, sir. Stay busy for sure.
Sounds like you've got your hands on it, so.
Yes, sir.
I feel good about that.
It's been a pleasure working with Cleveland County. We got a, a good team over here. We communicate really well, and from what I can see, it's, it's going to go really smooth. I think you guys are going to be happy with all these projects when we get done with them. I'm glad to be a part of it.
Anybody else? All right. If not, this time, Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Just like to shout out to the Sheriff's Department. They had an incident in a school this week, and it was handled very professionally and really proud of our Sheriff's Department and their professionalism.
Anyone else?
We just finished up the Veterans Council meeting, and we've got a Veterans Council Parade coming up November the eleventh, at eleven o'clock downtown Shelby. So anyone that's interested in participating in the parade or the program needs to contact the Veterans Office, and they can get an application to get in the parade, because if you don't have a number to get in the parade, you may be at the back of the line. And we ran into that problem last year. People come up, say, hey, I'm supposed to be so-and-so. Where's your number? Didn't have one, so I'm just like to put that out. Now, also, I had the council agent, which is the senior senator, and they just received a grant to help pay for some of the home meals, meals on wheels. And what we talked about, and I asked him to give me a breakdown, I'd like to know how many people's got applications that's not getting it in Kings Mountain, how many Shelby, Bowling Springs, and whatever, and how many out in the county? And we're going to start looking to see if we can pull some support for these different areas to enhance the meals on wheel. For one person, the meals per year is about three thousand dollars. So it's an expensive deal. And also, they lost the Palm Tree Church, where they used to organize the meals. So if anybody knows of any place up in that area that would be willing to let them use it, get ahold of somebody at the senior center, or me, or whatever.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? All right, Brian, do your staff have anything else to add? If not, that brings us down to adjournment. Before we get to that, the next meeting, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners, will be held on Tuesday, November the first, 2022, here in the Commissioners' chambers. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All of us, fair, will say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right, adjourn.